She's trying to get Exhibit A.
Thank you for bringing us all together this evening for to conduct the city's business, business. Be with us over this holiday season and keep everyone safe in their travels and come back 2024 ready to hit the ground running. Same as I prayed.
Call to order, the City Council meeting of December 21st, 2023. Vicki, will you call to order? Oh, we're doing the pledge. Hold on, let's do the pledge. I already tried to rush.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, Ms. Vicki, when you're ready. JP Hodges.
Here.
Louis Short.
Here.
Lane Tubbs.
Here.
Jim Adams.
Here.
Melissa Choate.
Here.
Hallie Sud. Jim Lane.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Here.
Attorney Prince.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Members of the press. Let the record show we have a quorum. Guys, we had a lot of stuff to do tonight. If, as we move through, if you can please speak loudly so that Vicki can hear you, that will be super helpful. Okay, let's get started. First, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes as presented of the October 19th, 2023 City Council meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion? Vicki? Jim Lane.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Melissa Choate.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes as presented, plus excerpts of the November 16th, 2023 City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki? Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Jim Adams.
Yes.
Melissa Choate.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Jim Lane.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Abstain.
Oh, wait, hang on, I think I've got abstain in that. We're talking about, we're not talking about the workshop and we're on the.
We're on the minutes from last meeting.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, last meeting.
At the last meeting, I was not here.
Yes.
What's the?
Motion.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next, approval of the payments journals dated November 1st through November 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki? Melissa Choate?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of street fund financial sanitation fund, financial general fund, community center O and M, and miscellaneous funds dated November 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki? Jim Lane?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. You have your supervisor reports in your packets. Do you have any questions for your supervisors? Okay. Unfinished business, we have the Roberts McNutt bid for the community center in the amount of $20,307. For repairs.
That's the one that we can get into that energy audit, we think? No?
I don't think we can.
Don't think we can.
Vicki, I have a question on the street funding segment is up, will we just throw it on? If you don't have it approved, you can not vote.
Yes.
Yes.
So this is basically O and M that's been neglected. Rain leaking in, all the windows and all that stuff.
Yeah. Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki? Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Lane?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, you have a quote for the Whippet. For the pool. We had talked about this last meeting. The amount for that is $20,530.80.
If I remember correctly, this is the one that we deferred some of the workout equipment so that we had money for this last meeting.
Correct. Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki? Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have an ordinance for the energy audit and I'd like to invite Mr. Walter McSpadden up to to speak to this and if anybody has any questions.
Mayor, as far as going to the ordinance that was prepared, is there any other, for the minutes, could you open the public hearing? Get anyone out here to speak and disclose the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Then I'll, then I'll ask your question.
Okay. Okay. Public hearing is open at this time. If anybody has anything about the energy audit, would you please come forward? Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing.
I'm Walter McSpadden with the Rockford and Jennings account to the office of the year. And I would talk about financial for you.
Sir?
Oh, good. I know it's over there.
The Energy Office has agreed to make a loan in the amount stated in the ordinance and extremely low interest rate for the train project. I know absolutely nothing about engineering or trains, so we have engineers and train people if you have any questions about the project. The ordinance is very straightforward and it just simply authorizes the issuance, not the issuance of bonds, which is what we normally do. But these are actually structured as a loan instead of a bond because that's what the Energy Department wanted to do it. And so this would authorize the, the city to enter into a long agreement with the Energy Office, which would be administered by the Arkansas Development Finance Authority to repay over the term of 20 years, whatever's in the ordinance. I'm having it from, I'm gonna pay all my copies to the clerk. If you have any questions, I can get a copy and answer any specific questions about the ordinance or the legality of the project. Otherwise, I defer questions about the project to people who actually understand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Are there any questions for Mr. McSpadden or our engineers?
When will we be able to get this, when will this project kick off, Nick? Do you have any idea?
It's the end of June or it's like a week or two.
So we'll have notice and receipts and we're, right, part of that. Okay. Thank you.
We're gonna introduce the ordinance.
Yeah.
I make a motion to place the energy audit ordinance on first reading by title only.
Second.
Vicki?
What's the, what's the ordinance number?
Okay. I think she's getting it.
Yeah.
The ordinance number's gonna be 2023-18 if passed. And who was my motion in my second? Louis?
Please by title only?
We have the two.
Yeah.
Vicki? JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Lane?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance providing for the execution and delivery of an equipment loan agreement between the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, the Arkansas Energy Office and the Arkansas Development Finance Authority, providing for the payment of loan payments pursuant to such agreement, ratifying the execution and delivery of a pact agreement, authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to such a pact agreement, prescribing other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
How long is title on it?
It is long. I didn't even write this one.
I make a motion to place on second reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Vicki? Jim Lane?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance providing for the execution and delivery of an equipment loan agreement between the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, the Arkansas Energy Office and the Arkansas Development Finance Authority, providing for the payment of loan payments pursuant to such agreement, ratifying the execution and delivery of a pact agreement, authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to such pact agreement, prescribing other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion to place on third and final reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Vicki? Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance providing for the execution and delivery of an equipment loan agreement between the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, the Arkansas Energy Office and the Arkansas Development Finance Authority, providing for the payment of loan payments pursuant to such agreement, ratifying the execution and delivery of a pact agreement, authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to such pact agreement, prescribing other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance. Second that.
Emergency clause?
With the emergency clause.
There we go, separate. Vicki? Jim Lane?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Second.
Vicki? Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Jim Lane?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all for making it so easy.
Thank you, Mr. McSpadden.
Thank you for your time.
We've been waiting for that for a while, yeah.
We're disgusted.
Happy face. Okay, next, we have the police, police department vehicle in the amount of $36,380.
So what we just talked about, the budget maybe is lost.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki? Jim Lane?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we've got the flooring at the bank building. I got my last final quote this morning. We have to do final submittals, but it looks like it's gonna come in under 50,000. It should be around 46. So I would just like permission to spend up to 50,000 on the flooring for the bank building.
Do we have the, the rest of the information? Have we worked on, stay within that certain window? Do we have the rest of the information as well?
For which?
For, there's some roofing and stuff like that as well?
I have already had three repairs made and they were not very costly. I think we're gonna have to do it like by project because if it's over 35,000, it has to be put out for bid. If it's over 10, I have to come have it approved.
So this will take care of the flooring and then what additional other project do you want to have done in the building?
On the building?
Walls?
Um, we'll paint, but that's not gonna be very much. We're gonna demo ourselves the floor. We'll paint ourselves. That's not a big deal. I think the next biggest cost is gonna be the doors and the alarm system.
Do you have any budgetary idea on that or no?
I don't. I haven't had him come look through it yet.
What have you already spent on?
Well, before we had had, we had spent some money for an architect to look at some stuff when it was gonna be the all three.
Yeah.
Lane.
You're just talking about current, like.
Yes, yeah.
I haven't even got a bill for the roof yet.
That's O and M.
It won't be much.
We've gotta fix that.
It'll be, yeah, yeah.
We talked about.
But we had a target we were trying to stay.
150 is what I thought it was, right?
Yeah, for the whole, yeah.
And wasn't the flooring gonna be the lion's share of that at 50?
Yes.
Have we had anybody else look it over to give us a budgetary number for the rest of the stuff? Was it Nick who gave us that number or no? I don't remember where we got the 150 from.
Uh, we just kinda, well, what all was the 150? Yeah.
Stay below.
Yeah. I don't think it'll be more than that unless the alarm system comes as some crazy number.
Do we have an alarm system currently in our current building?
We do. And I want it to, I wanna be able to use the same fobs so when the department heads come over, they can just fob in. And then we've also talked about a security camera system that encompasses the whole city. But we might have to do that in baby steps.
What would that entail? Just like all the different properties we own, is that?
Properties, yeah, cameras at all the different properties.
Including like the park and stuff, stuff for vandalization or something? That might be a capital project thing.
Yes, I think it will be.
Is that what we were anticipating, Nick? About 50? Am I right in that? And we came in under that, 48 is what it was.
Yeah, I think, I think it's been around 46, but I wanted wiggle room just in case.
So this is our commitment to the, to the building, so we're, this is your plan, right?
It's my plan. I'm ready.
All right.
It's gonna be, it's our best option and I think it'll be great for the city and it'll give us room to grow.
Well, that building right now that we're in was my sixth grade class. And I'm 84. Did I tell you anything? Buildings have to be worked on.
That's right. We've about outgrown it. So may I have a motion?
I'm, will we accept the quote? For either 50, 48, or 40?
I asked to spend up to 50.
Make a motion for 50,000.
Up to $50,000.
Thank you.
Do we do the floor in the bank, in the former bank building?
Correct. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, it's gonna be tile and LVP. We do tile that'll last forever. Vicki? Jim Lane?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
No.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have a work order for the fire department to build bays behind the current city hall.
Only printed out the ordinances on my computer. I don't find it numbered. These are just next.
Yes, this will move the project forward.
Motion to approve the work order to move forward.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki? JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Lane?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have, um, fire department has asked to spend $13,992.55 of their Act 833 money for an extrication tool. He still has money left over from his CBAs from before that we had approved. Yeah. Ryan, will you have any left over after this? Will this cover? To reapply for next year? Great, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Which was it, 13,9255?
Do you wanna see it? Yes, ma'am. Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Lane?
Yes.
JP Hodges? Motion carried. Next, we have a stormwater work order. This is for downtown and our other drainage issues we have with our bond money. That salt has taken over. And that total is 164,000. Absolutely.
I just wanna make sure, but we talked about this a while back, but to make sure everybody's on the same page so that, do what?
Yes, talk loud.
Just project.
Do what?
Just project.
Okay. All right, so what we talked about last time, that, that would be, there were four projects, there were two up here on 25B, two downtown, third and fifth. That would be the total for all of them. We know we're not gonna have enough budget to accomplish all of that. So we're gonna prioritize them with Third Street crossing being the most important. So do that one and then see what sort of budget we have left over and then we would attack whichever ones, there it goes. The next highest in priority that we have the budget for. So that total dollar amount, the bottom will not be spent. I can assure you, we're not, we're gonna run out of budget long before that. So I just wanna make sure everybody was clear on that. It's so, it's a bit of an à la carte, if that makes sense, but that way we don't have to, you know, you know what you're gonna get. It won't be any more than that. But we'll pick and choose based off of that in correspondence with Casey. The only one in addition to that that's on there is the beautification one. And that was originally, we had $350,000, I think, in that bond. But we have since been awarded, as of a couple of weeks ago, I believe, the TAP grant. So that's expanded that budget from 350 up to 850 and we should have some remaining left. So we're looking at closer to a million dollar project now, so. Anyway, I just wanna make those clarifying notes. Any questions?
So you'll bill based on the project you tackle?
They're project specific, that's correct.
So we, we may not end up spending 164,000?
You will not end up spending that. It'll, it'll be far less than that. But just so everybody's on the same page at one time, knowing what we're getting into.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
So do we make a motion for up, not to exceed 164 or is that?
That'd be great for the work order? Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion.
Should we do it by project? I know, I wondered if.
Yeah.
So are you asking for permission to spend up to $40,000 on the Third Street?
However it's best for you. Yes, but each one is line up now, so if you wanted to vote each individual one, that would be fine. I'm not, I'll leave it to you for that. That way we can just know exactly what it is.
But none of these are gonna be worked on like simultaneously? Like you'll do one, next.
No, we're not gonna start design on any one of them. We'll start design on Third Street, we'll start design on beautification and nowhere near knows. And then we will come back and communicate with Casey or we can come back to council again. Or if you guys wanna vote, they'll go on the student, however, I just want you to have all the.
Let's just do the vote on the two.
Just vote on the beautification of the Third Street.
All right, so beautification is what?
37,500. And Third Street is 40,000.
Well, there's a couple of other things, isn't there?
We're, yeah, but we're gonna start with those two. Third Street's gonna be the biggest.
So 77,500 is what we're voting for tonight. Yeah, or you can round it up if you wanted.
For those two projects specifically.
So make a motion, we approve the work orders for the Third Street downtown drainage improvements and downtown beautification projects for a total of.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, what, you just went around it to 80,000? Not to exceed 80,000 for for the. Simplicity? I like it.
Second that, yeah.
Vicki, when you're ready?
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Stain.
Motion carried. Can you stand up Lane?
I have to, good night.
No, yes, you go, you do whatever you need to do. Okay, next up, we have been awarded the SRO grant. And in doing so, we're gonna have to ask for another position since we'll be moving an officer over to the school. And if you have questions about that, Chief Hill can speak to that. So it's not really gonna do a lot to our budget because the contract, the grant and the school will be paying for the third SRO, so we will have an empty position on patrol. So I just need to okay it that we can hire another officer to fill all of those positions. It's for three years. We'll have to look at everything by then, in three years. And see if we even still need that third SRO or, you know.
Do we make it, do we make the position contingent upon that, or like, do you make it for three years, like, or are we just adding a new?
It won't be new. We'll, we're moving one of our officers to the schools and so we need to fill that position.
And we can't just fill it since, or is it because they're shared, is that why? I was just, I'm just that curious.
Right. Chief, can you speak to that?
I'm having a little trouble here.
So the, I would just, so it's a three-year grant, so like, I was just, do we make the position contingent upon that, or why?
Well, the SRO position will only be for three years, the extra one.
Okay.
The grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand total, she's, I think, passing out the, the copy now of contract. We have normally done a three-year contract with the school. We've had to modify it as recently as twenty-two. But that's generally just to keep up with the change in positions within the SRO itself.
I was saying, if they're three years, they didn't, they said they don't want an SRO, then you're just gonna absorb that extra labor?
Possibly through attrition, we would have to absorb that, but there's also the option for the city to go ahead and pick it up and keep the officer ourselves. So that's something to look at three years down the road though. Right now, we're covered fully, it's not costing us anything but a car, gas, the three SROs at school, so. That's kinda where we're at.
So budgetarily, we'll stay the same except for the car and gas.
So you need the motion to accept the grant position?
I think a motion to renew this contract is all we're really needing.
Do I need any?
But I wanted everybody to be aware, this is gonna create a technically another position within the department, just for housekeeping.
Everything's been, and I apologize, I was confirming some addition, everything's been approved, the school board, the whole majority is right?
Oh, yeah.
Actually, you've got a copy of Mr. Jennings' signature, I believe, we were at the school board meeting last, that last meeting, they, they approved it.
We had a different thing in our package.
Yeah, you had the old one, I apologize.
Ms. Mayor?
I thought it was the new one.
After we vote on this, we need to revisit salt for a second. I did some math on it, we gotta change the amount on that.
Okay, no problem.
Make a motion to, to accept that SRO three-year grant and the position, third position at the school.
Okay, should we do that with the contract? Should we do that and then the contract? Or just do the contract?
Just do the contract.
Okay.
Okay, make a motion for the...
Oh my gosh, right.
SRO.
I just looked at those as the totals.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Vicki?
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Melissa, I did the same thing you did. I did, I know, I just looked at the last one. Added it up.
Year for SRO decision, Sarah Berger and Tommy.
Tommy's going up there? Doug's going up there?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think it's a hundred.
It's about a hundred thousand.
Okay, motion carrying, so we need to back up a second? Sorry Nick.
We're short now.
I think it's funny, uh, go ahead.
We need to change that eighty thousand to a hundred thousand. For salt.
So that, that previous
Motion.
Motion needs to change from eighty thousand to a hundred thousand to cover
To cover the true expense.
Of the Third Street and the downtown beautification.
Thank y'all for catching that.
I just looked at the plans and specifications and added those two.
So do we need to make a motion to, to redo the other motion and then?
Oh gosh.
Just make it, just redo the motion.
Can we amend it?
Just make a motion to amend the previous motion. Make a motion to amend the previous emotion to the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for the Third Street downtown drainage improvements and downtown beautification.
I'll second that.
Great. Any discussion? Vicki?
Okay. Andy Eklund?
Stain.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Excuse me, Jim Ley?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carrying. Next, we have another CK asphalt.
What? It's on, it's on the agenda. It's on the agenda, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, last month, we voted on a quote and it was more than that, so I just need to go back and cover that extra ten thousand extra that it was. So I will just need a motion for the, might as well go ahead and do the whole amount, the sixty-six thousand for the invoice, since last time it was a quote, it came out higher. All those, um, streets we got paid, all the spaces.
Make a motion to approve invoice number, do you have it or not?
Zero nine zero three.
Zero nine zero three to CK asphalt in the amount of approximately sixty-six thousand dollars.
Sixty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, all of those. Our quote was for fifty-five something and it came out more. Vicki?
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, next up, we have a sanitation ordinance. Um, I've, I've had some questions about this already, so, um, I might wanna table it and have more discussion on it. You give me some direction. Melissa had some questions about some different prices.
So I, I did call around and, um, essentially, from what, from what I read in the ordinance, in our ordinance, we can put in there about a hundred and thirty-five gallons. And we're charged at a rate of twenty-five dollars a month, which is a lot of trash. In, in the county, one of the companies, it's ninety-six gallons a week at forty-one, forty-five a month. Actually charged quarterly, but I tried to do apples to apples as close as I can, so it's actually less trash for more money. But then there was another company in the county that charged, like, bags, like, up to five bags, which is close to like one of our cans for like twenty-two eighty a month. And I, I just, we, we're a retirement community and we have a lot of people that, like, might have a Walmart sack of trash and we've talked about that in the workshops. And I realize it's, it will take more time. I just wish that we could come up with a rate or like a fee schedule to where, you know, your one-bag people aren't charged as much as your three-can people. It's just a lot for somebody who's living on social security. But I, I mean, we need to raise the rates. It's just, I feel like this flat rate system hurts a lot of people. And I did drive around my ward, I, I did, on trash days. We have a lot of people that are doing more than fifty pounds, like, they have to be. I mean, I could put fifty pounds in one forty-five gallon.
Enforcement was part of it too, as well. Yeah, I mean, because we haven't been.
Issue, but we're not even, again, we're, I just, we're punishing people and taking advantage of people that might not, I mean, Mr. Jim, you probably don't have as much trash as the Cho family. Um, I mean, we have, there's, we have four kids, so I mean, we have a lot of trash. We fill up two of those forty-five gallon containers and sometimes we have more. That we have to take to other places.
The only hesitation I have about doing that is doing tiered, is how do you enforce it? But there's also in governmental things at least, it seems as though there's precedence of, sometimes your pa, your taxes pay for kids you may not have that go to public universities and all that other stuff too. So it's not unprecedented, but I certainly understand your...
And the current, and the work goes the same way, minimum. They don't spend, they don't use that much water, they're still paying that amount.
Right. I feel like we have to have a minimum fee, you know?
Sure.
I, I understand where you're coming from, but the city does have a place for that. If they can afford it. But I don't think, I don't think, um, dropping it down to like a tiered program would be a wise idea. Some because they have a bag, Walmart's like this week, business is kind of, they don't have how much next week, so I, I just don't think, I think we're good where we are. If they got more, then we charge them, but.
And it's kind of a product of, like, it, it would be as impossible to enforce as, if you go to the lethal lens, you know, obviously.
But I feel like we have to do it after that too, like.
Yeah, the majority of the people don't get their, it leaves picked up, but they still have to pay for everybody else that's getting leaves picked up. And so there's really no way for us to, it's gotta be, I wouldn't think it would have to be consistent across the board. One payment, one try, it's very, I can't, I don't know how you can enforce that honestly. Unless you had some kind of metric, some kind of way of weighing, you know?
But we don't charge.
Well, it says fifty pounds in the ordinance, so are we weighing it now?
Those fifty pounds is essentially because of the safety of trash people.
But aren't they weighing it?
No.
Waste connections.
So we're not even following our own ordinance? Cause it says up to fifty pounds in the ordinance.
That's what the container's supposed to be able to hold.
Oh, I could put more than fifty pounds in a forty-five gallon container?
That's what the fifty pounds is for. Not because of cost, but because of...
I think, I think costs should factor, and you should factor.
That's not really why it's there.
I mean, I get, we have to have a base rate to cover the fees and I get what y'all are saying, like, Jim, what you're saying about, you know, we pay for certain things, yes, there's a base. But there's a gross difference in what people are contributing and we're raising rates and I just think we could do better, but...
So, I think, I mean, I'd be willing to, to table it and do an enforcement for a couple of months of, and like, having our sanitation departments say, we're only gonna pick up, you know, the, the three things, anything else extra, you don't, and, and actually figure out where our true sanitation costs are for that. We could, that'd be a good first step.
Just do a draft there and, yeah.
You see, cause we, cause we don't really know, we don't really know what it's really running us if we were to enforce the three things, but we also do have to keep in mind limbs and leaves and the fact that all of that stuff is going up every year. So it, it's a delicate dance and I certainly understand the taxpayers too, but I'm also willing to say, well, let's start with enforcing it for the first quarter or whatever and see what it does to our to our, to our total bills of, of dumping, right? I mean...
They're not automated either and I keep hearing, well, we have to go automated to do that. And I just, I love the idea we talked about in the workshop of everybody getting, you know, the reg, what the amount of cans, like, the city buying those.
You get one ninety-pound.
Automated was for the ninety-pound can, not the forty, not a gallon, sorry.
But if we did it, if we, if we can't go automated now, you know, we have the cans, we provide those and then...
Anything outside of it. If the lid doesn't close, you, or you don't take it.
Right. I don't know. I just think we could do better and that's my two cents.
I think our, I think if you're concerned and you're hearing flack about the rate increase, I think the first step if we wanna go that route would be to strictly enforce through Q1 our own ordinance, see what it does to our bill compared to last year at this time. And then we could see what the appropriate rate increase to spread across the board is, but I do feel as though that, I think waste management has gone up twenty, on the order of twenty percent in the last year of dumping fees, so at some point, it is gonna have to trickle through to the, to the...
Right.
True. So, I mean, it's, it's a delicate balance. I mean, I, in my view, one to three months of anything is not gonna be a killer. But I do think we need to make sure we are staying ahead of it and not going five, not going five years.
I mean, we're basically a monopoly, so like, people don't even have options. Like, out in the county, there are options.
But we're like one-third the price, it sounds like, right?
Uh, yeah.
Well, no, not if, not with the one company, you get...
Well, that's just the benefit of living in the city limits too. They have benefits, we have benefits that people out in the county that choose the county.
With our trash?
Several things, trash can one, but, um, they don't have city water, you know, so it's just part of choosing the three, one, three.
Melissa, what was that, that third part you said, or the second rate?
The second rate?
Was it twenty-one a week?
Twenty-two eighty a month for up to five bags a week.
So that's one can, basically?
Yeah, pretty much.
So we're doing three cans?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's basically sixty dollars a month for, for the cumulative amount of garbage you could put out at the city.
But I do think that they probably dump somewhere else because they're surcy.
Yeah. Well, that's neither here nor there, in terms of where they dump it, but it sounds like it's about three times the price.
Maybe their dump fees are as much as ours, I don't know.
Can.
Are the questions coming mainly from people that are on social security or lower income?
It's, I mean, it's coming from, I mean, it's coming in respect to people that age, yes.
Is there a way for us to, um, create an option for lower income?
It would be very labor intensive, I suspect.
Right. Maybe, maybe we put it back on to the, to the resident to send us information based off of their, I know that's...
Somebody has to process that information.
Involved with that is, is crazy.
You talking like a subsidy program for low income?
Like, we could cap it for higher income earners at like, you know, thirty-five or something like that.
I just think charged by, like, more by amount versus...
I think that'd be very hard to police.
I, obviously, but.
I think that's a whole enforcement issue. But I don't think we're, yeah, but we're not even following our own ordinance now, which frustrates me. Cause we can't, like, how do we go weigh everybody's trash?
Well, I don't...
Well, I don't think you do, but I, I think you, I think that issue is on the sanitation workers when they pick, if they recognize that they're going to someplace that is abusing, you know, the bag limit, so somebody's, um, and then that, it really falls back on sanitation to pay attention. Um, I mean, the, the, the workers know when they go someplace, if, if, if somebody has, you know, fifteen bags and they're doing it on a regular basis that those people need to be charged additional and then responsibility falls on them to, I, I will tell you, I, I raised seven kids, sometimes we had lots of extra trash, but I would say, send me the bill, you know?
Yeah, Christmas morning, for example.
Well, I think they just recognize, yes, that, like, on those, at those times, it's gonna be higher anyway, but, you know, for larger families and I, I expected to get a bill for, you know, what we went over and sometimes I did.
You're gonna have four or five trash bags or a lot as a feather and then maybe that night before your wife decided to clean out the refrigerator.
Right.
And there's old bologna and four cans of mayo or whatever.
Whatever.
And that's a heavy bag. And that's a heavy bag.
It just doesn't seem hard for me to, like, go by the size, like, the amount of cans, I don't know.
I think step one is enforcing it, but I also don't, I think it'd be a, a nightmare to have a tiered system. I think it has to be flat rate, in, in my opinion.
Like, can you have a flat rate, though, and if you go over that?
I think we either don't pick up and they can save it and smell it for a week, or take it down to sanitation and, and pay the fee.
But then you get into a, a place of, of, they felt like it was too heavy, that it was actually forty-nine pounds.
Right.
I'm not, I, I don't think you can go by, I think you have to go by bulk volume, if, if the lids don't close.
It's gotta fit in.
Does our ordinance?
That'll average out.
It does, fifty pounds.
And it, again, it does.
And that's discretion, if they pick it up and they can't lift it, they, they have every right to set it back down and say.
Yeah, but.
Do something.
And then the actual, not to belabor the point, but the actual work of the job, the actual time it takes, that when a guy is out trying to earn his hourly pay and get the job done in a day's time, he's not going, unless it's just crazy, the bag's about to rip and tear through, he's got a job to do. He doesn't care about the weight, he's just trying to get in the truck.
I think they have a limit on how much a can can weigh, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, let's.
Biggest problem I got is when they quit recycling the plastic bottles, they take up enormous amount of space in your garbage can.
Okay, I'm with Jim, let's, uh, we have a new code enforcement officer now, starting, uh, January second, let's work on.
I think we go through, if people are, we're hearing complaints, I think we probably deserve to enforce it for one quarter and then do an analysis. But I, I do think at some point it will have to be adjusted based on the tremendous hit to the bottom line we have felt.
Yes.
Because of dumping fees, really nothing on us, it's just, it's what, kind of thirty, twenty, thirty percent?
Well, they allow you three cans and that's it.
Across the new business, right.
We have to raise it, but I just wanna raise it in the right spots.
Well, they al- they also had an opportunity to pad their own financials on it as well when they stopped accepting recycling, and every, automatically now that's in the dumping fee and the weight is calculated accordingly, too. So, that's part of it, too.
We also have to work on a, a late fee and a reinstatement dumpster fee.
One hundred percent, absolutely.
Because that's been a huge, huge issue.
I thought we did that already.
Our late fee is pennies.
Well, can we, can we approve that tonight?
No, I thought, no, I thought we.
No, we've discussed it.
Can we do what?
Can we approve the late fee and the?
I think we'd have to do that next month.
Because that was on this, too.
We didn't, we didn't establish a reset fee.
Wasn't that on, isn't this on the?
It's on the very last page, on the addendum.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, the penalty, twenty-five dollars?
Can, it's part of, I mean, it's part of the, it's part of the packet, so, yes.
Yeah, it's right there, it's on the last page.
Well, I'll bring up another subject, um, there's been a dumpster from Greenbrier across the street from me for two weeks. He's gonna collect money, we're getting him getting his sales tax off of it. Well, I'm, I'm just saying, it's, it's a big dumpster, too, it came out of Greenbrier, and, um.
So, can we?
So, we didn't have to haul that stuff off either.
Can we make an addendum to this addendum fee schedule to twenty-five dollars and pass the ordinance that includes the late fees, or do we have to rewrite the ordinance in full?
The ordinance is the same.
So, it's just the addendum fee schedule?
The ordinance is the same, it's the addendum that needs modification.
But we didn't, I thought I saw late fees on here, or was it?
It's, the late, the late fee is in the document, the, the fees for the cans is on the back, it was, is on the last page.
Yeah, okay. Okay, right. But the late fee was already in there, you're saying?
No, they adjusted the late fee from, from pittance to something that's real.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
So, you could.
One of my constituents had several people living in a house and wanted to have five garbage cans.
No.
Charged with the can, that's.
So, you could move to keep, you want to keep the, the residential three cans at twenty-five dollars per?
That was a, a suggestion, if we've had a lot of feedback, I'm, I'm just one vote.
Twenty-five dollars per month and impose a late fee.
Correct. Can we just leave the rest of the fee schedule the way it is and say the residential fee will be twenty-eight dollars per month? Because the rest of it's kind of billed by the yard.
You said, I thought the problem was that the twenty-eight dollar, that it says twenty-eight dollars.
Yeah, on the addendum, twenty-eight per month for residential, three cans, can we ma- can we just change it as a motion to, to, make an addendum to the addendum to twenty-five dollars for residential?
Now, we do have something in there where people are handicapped, uh, our sanitation workers will go up and pick up a, a can off of the front porch.
Yes, they do that.
Yeah, and, uh, which I think helps people, especially with aging population around here.
So, your motion would be to approve the addendum with the modification that residential is going to stay at twenty-five dollars per month, and we're going to add to the addendum, uh, paragraph five point one six of the.
Dash eleven.
Of the ordinance regarding a late fee.
Yes.
All such fees will be paid on before the tenth day of the month, and a ten percent penalty shall be charged on any fee that is delinquent for more than thirty days.
Yes, because, that is my motion.
That's your motion?
So, the late fees and stuff only apply to businesses, don't they?
No, it needs to be on everybody, I think it's, we're changing it to apply to everybody.
No.
It's all, it's all on the water bill, and they shut it off if you don't pay it off immediately, so.
I think it's more than fair.
I don't think that there's, I don't think we have any late fees for trash.
If you had Bill's trash pickup service in the county and you didn't pay Bill to pick up your trash, they would stop picking up your trash.
I have no problem with it, I just don't think that it's affecting.
Because before, it's only been pennies, now it needs to be.
Yeah, but it's still coming off, it's still, it's still being paid through the water.
Well, two dollars.
Right, two dollars and fifty cents.
I thought we were always talking about dumpsters that people refuse to pay.
Eight seventy-five.
And that's the only one that makes any difference, so, it's the dumpsters and businesses.
Every time they weigh the sanitation, people make their water bill one up, because they, they collect.
Late fees needed for that, right? The only thing that makes any difference on the late fees is the dumpsters and the businesses.
Any of the, any of the businesses, the businesses should have a late fee one hundred percent, and we should also, well, the water bill just takes it, they shut off your water, right? So, the residential, but we still, even if your water's turned off and you have garbage cans out the road, we pick it up. So, is there any way to sync that with not, not pick it up, but if they've had their water shut off or delinquent water bill, when they reinstate the water bill, they pay us a late fee?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Or they pay us a, yeah, because I'm sure those garbage out.
Yeah.
We may have to reanalyze that, I don't know.
That, that's gonna, that's.
That needs, that needs some thought, but it's just a, an idea, yeah. But we can, this one pertains to commercial, and we can certainly do it on commercial, and we should.
We should.
It's a business, they gotta pay their bills.
Do we need to do this three times? Or do we just, okay.
So, did you already make the motion?
Uh, she's.
She's still.
She's refiguring. Sorry. Do you just wanna wait till next month?
So, we don't wanna do anything with the residential right now?
Do you want us to just table it till next month, the whole thing, and then you can, we probably, we got changes on changes, would that be better for you?
Probably, let's, let's not rush it and, and make a mistake.
Does that sound all right, Melissa?
And I can talk to the water department about that other.
Does that sound all right, Melissa?
Yeah, and can, and then figure out on the enforcement, like, that might.
I think Scott was in the workshop that we mentioned to him to start enforcing, especially after the first of the year. Ms. Mayor, will you reiterate that?
Yes, sir.
Maybe start getting the tags that said, you're.
Oh, we got the tags, we're ready.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, we're tabling, we're seeing addition ordinance until January.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Okay, next up, we've got, uh, a removal of dumpsters from fixed assets as presented, there's a lot of them.
Ma- I'll make a motion to remove the dumpsters proposed as presented.
Hold on a second.
Uh, he'll salvage what he can or pull pieces off and fix what he needs and then trash.
You know, different thing of pygmy trap and a women's track team.
Yes, there was a second, any discussion? Vicki, you ready?
I'm ready. Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J P Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried, next, our dump truck repair, right now, all we have is a quote for six thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars. We think that it will be more, I'm gonna wait until we get a better actual number.
I mean, what does a dump truck cost, eighty, sixty thousand, eighty thousand, a hundred thousand?
This is for repairs.
I know, but we're.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
We've got a, we've got a penny holding up a dime here, I think we should just fix it.
And, and I told him that, to go ahead and get it looked at, because he's gotta take it to Clinton, and that guy's not gonna know until he gets down in there.
Okay.
So, I said, go ahead and get it fixed, and then we can approve the quote.
Why are we taking it to Clinton?
I don't know, that's where he got it, I guess.
It's a diesel, obviously, it's a diesel.
Don't get me lying.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's choice to.
Heavy equipment is.
Oh, the equipment.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's his choice to pick.
It's gonna get repaired.
All right, get it repaired, perfect.
Great, next, we got the, um, we need a grand.
It don't matter anything, just do it.
What, the truck?
The dump or truck repair, yeah.
Do it. Um, next, we have an encroachment, thirty-six Woodland West, we need a grandfather in, this is one of those, you know, little things where it's probably off a couple of feet for the setbacks, um, so.
Never done a million of these.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Do a million and one.
Need a second.
Second, please?
Second.
Oh, I like it.
Who said it?
In stereo. Okay, oh, any discussion? I was thinking, go ahead, go ahead, Vicki.
I was about to. J P Hodges?
Yep.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried, next, I would like to table the park and rec ordinance because you just got it and probably need to go through it a little bit better. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, next, remove the two thousand and seven F-150 from the fire department fixed assets, been number one, F T P W one-four V six-seven K C five-one-five-five-three-three.
What'll we do with that?
We are gonna, that's the next item, we are going to, uh, sell it to the evening shade fire department.
Oh, okay, the motion to remove it?
Take him.
Hold one second, please.
Running out of ink?
Vicki, man, I'd be able to talk to mom.
Okay, who is my motions, please?
Um.
Uh, Lane was motion, I was second.
Yeah, Lane motion, Adam second.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ready for a vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J P Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I'd like approval to sell, for the fire department to sell the, um, F-150 to the evening shade, shade fire department. Six thousand five hundred.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki, when you're ready? That number was six, I'm sorry, yeah, Louis and Lane.
Hold on a second. All right, J P Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yeah.
We're almost done. Okay, next, um, the fire department to purchase a vehicle, an SUV, uh, Ryan has found one for seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Sixty-five thousand miles on it, I saw.
Mm-hmm.
Just what we asking for, I approve, I'd make a motion, we accept that.
Second.
Any discussion?
Louis, was I, were you second?
Definitely second.
Yes, ma'am.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
J P Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we're at, we're at R, the Eagle Bank CDs are gonna mature January twelfth, twenty-four, I would like approval to renew those.
Some moved.
I think it's gonna go up again. Yeah.
Some of them are there, some of them are at other, they're rotating other banks.
We have Summit Eagle and Summit, yes, okay.
Second.
Uh, who motions? Thank you.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Was this for three months?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we could do it for longer if we wanna keep that interest rate.
Are we, is it, are we allowed to publicly state it?
It is kind of a gamble, but.
I think we already talked about the three months being a good time to rotate, be able to get them out if needed to.
Okay.
I think they are talking about rate decreases next year, the Fed is, but we can.
Well, in three months, we can do them for six, if we even want to.
Well, unless the three-month rate goes up, you might wanna keep it at three weeks.
Yeah.
We can do three months, that's fine.
Okay, Vicki?
Yeah, I'm good.
Hi, Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J P Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Motion carried, next up, I have a computer invoice, we have a new IT gentleman, and he's been fabulous, and this covers, uh, most of our departments for all of these, uh, new computers and servers, it's been much needed.
I didn't see that one.
For some reason, my computer invoice is an encroachment.
Yeah, that's what mine said, too, it was double.
Yeah.
We didn't actually.
Yeah, I didn't see that invoice.
Okay. Um, you wanna pass it around?
It's from TG Incorporated, and the total is ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents.
Well, that's what I owe, I did, I did eight thousand down, so the total is nineteen thousand five hundred and eleven dollars.
How old is all of our stuff, I mean, it's all way outdated, right?
Some of it's way outdated, so, we're trying to, um, update those things, and we gotta get servers for the police department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they.
I'd be happy to pass this around.
I've got a ninety-six going.
Is there a firewall and all that stuff included in this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the police department has a separate, they're on their own thing, and, yeah, he's getting us up to date, and I'm sure there'll be another invoice.
So, remaining balance is ten thousand eight seventy-two fifty?
Yes, sir.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you want us, yeah, just.
Fifty bucks on every one of those Nordons every, every year?
Does anybody else wanna see?
So, this, they're not like, it's not really a contract, it's more of like a as.
Yeah, kinda go along, kinda as you go along, yeah. Any discussion? Vicki?
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
J P Hodges?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Ley?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Next up, we've got the twenty twenty-four budget resolution. It wasn't the budget. Oh, I don't know.
Would you like, are we gonna do this one? Do I have to read this whole one or no?
Just once. Yeah.
Would you like resolution number?
Resolution number will be twenty twenty-three dash zero eight if passed.
Mayor, the third SRO is not included.
Right, but should they be since that's
We do budget for them, and then the court repays us, but, but we will need to amend the police salary to include that third SRO.
Have we hired the third SRO yet?
It's not
He's already on the, okay.
Yes.
So we'll just have to reallocate the funds a little bit.
But we do budget for the entire amount of SROs.
Okay.
But he's
And then we get reimbursed from the court for them.
But he's already on the police budget currently. We'll have to hire to replace. But we have not hired the replacement yet right now. So technically, the budget's still good, we just need to increase it.
We can go ahead and pass it, and then we can amend it even next month.
But we might not even have someone next month, so.
Should be
We need to wait till we hire someone, right?
Uh, not necessarily. That way, we still have the number in there. I mean, we will need somebody.
Want me to go?
Go.
Resolution for the adoption of the municipal budget, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. Resolution providing for the adoption of a budget for the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas for twelve months, beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, appropriating money for each item of expenditure therein provided for and for other purposes. Whereas the city has made a comprehensive study and review of the proposed budget submitted by the mayor, and whereas is finding and conclusion of the city council that the schedules and exhibits of anticipated revenues and expenditures for the calendar year appear to be as accurate as possible for budgetary purposes. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Heber Springs, Arkansas, section one. This resolution shall be known as a budget resolution for the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, for twelve-month period beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The attached budget incorporated herein as if set out word for word and figure for figure reflects revenues and expenditures as set forth in the succeeding pages. Section two, the respective funds for each item of expenditure proposed in the budget for twenty twenty-four are hereby approved and adopted for the operation of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas by the city council on this day and constitute an appropriation of funds which are lawfully applicable to the items contained within the budget. This budget may be altered or revised by action of this governing body, and unfledged funds may be subsequently appropriated to other purpose, except as prohibited by law. Section three, the mayor or his duly authorized representatives may approve for payment out of funds appropriated by this budget or otherwise approved by the city council for those purposes, or may disapprove any bills, debts, or liabilities asserted as claims against the city, provided however that the execution of all contracts, conveyances, and lease contracts shall be performed by the mayor and the city clerk or recorder when authorized by his resolution in writing approved by a majority vote of the city council present and participating. Section four, if any provision of this resolution or application thereof to any person or circumstances held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect another provision or applications of the resolution which can be given effect without invalid provision or application, and to this end, the provisions of this resolution are declared to be severable.
Do we need to read the numbers for exhibit A?
I don't have exhibit A.
The big numbers?
Yes.
I don't know that I have it.
You don't have it?
Actually, well, I printed it out, I think.
Do you need it?
I did print it. It's in here somewhere.
Send me to the rescue.
Perfect.
Just in case he can do it, she'll hit the big numbers. Is that okay?
I mean, I can do it.
Yeah, just hit the big numbers.
Okay. Exhibit A, summary of fund balance changes, primary funds, general fund, beginning balance, four million one hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred four dollars sixty-five cents. Total funds available in twenty twenty-four, seven million seventy-seven dollars, three hundred forty-one dollars sixty-five cents. Less total expenses of three million one hundred ninety-two dollars, eight hundred five dollar, three million one hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred five dollars twenty-six cents gets you to an estimated ending balance of three million eight hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars thirty-nine cents. That's for general community, starts at eight twenty-nine, four seventy-six, seventy-seven. It'll have revenues, we think, of one million six hundred sixteen thousand six hundred forty dollars. And we'll have an estimated, let me see, expenses of one million one hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars for an estimated ending balance of one million two hundred fifty thousand eight hundred ninety dollars seventy-seven cents. Sanitation fund, beginning balance of one million six hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and two cents. Revenues of one point six million, one million six hundred sixteen thousand six hundred forty dollars. Less expenses of one million three hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred seventy dollars for an estimated ending balance of one million nine hundred forty-four thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars and two cents. Street fund, beginning balance, six hundred eighty thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars forty-nine cents. Five hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred dollars of revenues. Less expenses of eight hundred eighty thousand eight hundred two dollars gets us to three hundred eighty-seven hundred fifty and forty cents. AP fund, one nineteen nine one two point oh two is beginning, revenues of fifty-two. And expenses seventy-five gets us ninety-six two, nine twelve oh two. Airport fund, beginning two eighty-two, nine thirteen sixty-four, ending balance of two twenty-three, one forty-three sixty-four. Administration of Justice Fund, beginning balance of six dollars and forty-eight cents. Ending balance of six dollars and forty-eight cents. After revenues and expenses, Cemetery Fund, beginning balance, forty-four thousand one hundred thirty dollars fifty-two cents. Uh, no revenues, some expenses, estimated ending balance of thirty-seven thousand one hundred thirty dollars fifty-two cents. Fire Equipment Fund, beginning balance, two hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred five dollars and three cents. After revenues and expenses, estimated ending balance of three hundred thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and three cents. Fire Protection Fund, beginning balance, ninety-four thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars. After revenues and expenses, ninety-four thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars. Gonna make ten dollars on that one, apparently. Municipal Court Administration, eighteen dollar, eighteen thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars seventy-six cents. After revenues and expenses, eighteen thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars seventy-six cents. Police Equipment Fund, beginning twenty-nine thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars ninety-one cents. After revenues and expenses, thirty thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars ninety-one cents. Reserve Fund, one hundred ninety-six thousand twenty-three dollars ninety-seven cents. After revenue, uh, one hundred ninety-seven thousand twenty-three dollars ninety-seven cents. Beginning balance as of twelve one, two thousand twenty-four, should be one one, two thousand twenty-four, right? Of eight million three hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. And estimated ending balance of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, of eight million four hundred fifty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars for a net change in funds of ninety-four thousand six hundred three dollars seventy-four cents.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Now I just need a motion.
So moved.
On the budget, that was at the same rate, right?
What, a resolution, just read it one time, Melissa?
In the budget, that we were budgeted at the
The workshop.
For the trash or whatever. The sanitation was based on the twenty-five?
Uh, twenty-eight. We redid it on twenty-eight, didn't we?
Yep, done twenty-eight.
Yeah. I believe it was.
I, I don't, I don't know. Do you, like, do you change that, like, before it passes? I didn't know if y'all did that or not in the budget.
Well, we just put in what we expect to make. We don't have to change it.
Okay.
It's just
I just didn't know if you went off the other rate or the proposed increase.
It may be three
I was just curious.
It may be three quarters of that, based on that. We don't know yet.
Yeah, well, and it
We also don't have expenditures.
If enforcement changes, I mean, it's, the whole number's probably gonna change.
Yeah.
Which I think, right, have more revenue.
So that's on, with the twen, so that's with the twenty-five, at the twenty-five dollar rate.
Good. So when it goes up, we can
I don't remember. We've, we've done, we've done, we went over three times, like
Can I hear a, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Vicki, when you're ready?
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges? Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to approve Burt Eddington to the Heber Springs Water Sewer and Commission.
Second.
Uh, I missed the
Second.
Vicki, when you're ready.
Okay, J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to approve the renewal of Ron Gillespie to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Vicki, when you're ready.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to approve the renewal of Mary Margaret Couch to Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Vicki, when you're ready.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to approve the renewal of Andy Eklund to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Vicki, when you're ready.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Epstein.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, a motion to approve Ally Sugg to Advertising and Promotion Commission.
So moved, while she's not here.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Vicki, when you're ready.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of renewal of Lane Tubbs to the Advertising and Promotion Commission.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Epstein.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, in your packet, you have a policy for federal awards. Uh, we have to have a federal audit done for twenty twenty-two, and, um, I just need a motion to pass the policy for federal awards, and then after that, I'll need a motion for the expense.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Andy Eklund?[1619.24]